Good afternoon, everyone. Today is July 25, 2023. It's 3:00 PM. This is the City of Prescott voting meeting. I welcome all of you here today. We've got some very distinguished guests here, and you can see by their uniforms and their decorations. So we'll be reading, and I'll be presenting a proclamation referencing the Korean War Armistice. That's the 70th anniversary on July 27. But we'll start off with introductions and announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements. I've enjoyed connecting with our citizens over the past few months, and I am continuing my outreach efforts. Tuesday, August 1 at 1:00 PM. I would love for everyone to join me online for Facebook Live, where I will talk with Recreation Services Coordinator Joe Baines and Ellen Bashore with the Junior Ranger Program. Later that day, on August 1, at 3:00, I'll hold open office hours at Prescott Public Library to meet citizens in person and talk about what's important to them. And on Saturday, August 5, I will be back at the farmer's market. Stop by my table and say hi, and tell me what you do or do not like about the city. August 15, I will also have office hours again at the Prescott Public Library from 3:00 to 5:00. Next, we have an open house that we want to invite everyone to for an informational meeting about the City of Prescott's 2025 General Plan and Historic Preservation Master Plan. It will be on Wednesday, August 30, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Raleigh P. Simmons Adult Center at 1280 East Rossar Street. City staff will have information, and will answer questions. Come learn more about our general plan and to give your input about Prescott's next 10 years. For more information about the 2025 General Plan, including updates and community survey, go to planprescott.com. And third, the City of Prescott has named Gwen Rowich, Public Works Director. Gwen served as Deputy Public Works Director since 2020 and has worked for the City of Prescott since 2007. Gwen has over 30 years of local government experience in Yavapai County. Prior to working for Prescott, she worked in various capacities for the town of Prescott Valley and the town of Chino Valley. Gwen was born and raised in Phoenix. Upon graduation from high school, she joined the United States Army, where she worked in public affairs specifically as a broadcast journalist, at the United States Military Academy at West Point. A resident of Prescott since 1992, Gwen and her husband Joe have three grown children and two grandchildren. Congratulations, Gwen.
Gwen, do you want to stand, please?
We're very glad that you're going to continue to provide excellent service to the City of Prescott. And then lastly, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Prescott for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. We congratulate Mark Woodfill and the entire Finance Department for their excellent work.
Mark, would you like to stand up, please?
Yeah, Mark.
Come on, Mark.
Mark, we need you to stand.
And I was talking to Mr. Woodfill a few minutes ago, and he was saying he's got so many of these, he could probably wallpaper his office. But that just shows you what great financial management we have here in this city. Congratulations, Mark.
And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation by Pastor Dan Hurlbert of the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilman Tenney, and then we'll do a roll call and proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day. We thank you for creating each and every one of us in your image and making us all worthy of your love and acceptance. We give you thanks today for the rain and the desert places and for the gift of new life. We pray to you for the fires in our area and for those who are working on those fires. We pray for those in our county who have been evacuated and ask you to speed the efforts of the firefighters. We thank you for our representative government, where no citizen has any more right than any others. And while we remain grateful for all who have served our country, today we thank you for those who served in the Korean War. May we never forget their sacrifice. We pray for our schoolchildren, for their teachers, staff, and administrators. We pray for their safety and growth throughout the upcoming school year. May they grow in your wisdom. We thank you for the abundant gifts you have given to us, especially in this beautiful place we call Prescott. Be with our elected leaders now, and help everything they do be for your glory. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Good, Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantalmy.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Well, I can tell you, I'm very privileged to be able to present this proclamation on the 70th anniversary of the armistice that ended the Korean War. And the fact that we have so many Korean War veterans in our community, when you think that this is 70 years ago, when that armistice was finally signed, ending the hostilities, that we have so many great veterans from that conflict here today with us is just a real privilege. Whereas the Korean War was fought from June 25, 1950, through July 27, 1953, and I will say, my father flew in the Pacific in World War II as a combat cargo C-46 pilot, and then he was reactivated for Korea. Of course, I was only a gleam in my father's eye at the time, but he was not deployed to the peninsula. So he ended up staying in the Air Force and retiring as a lieutenant colonel after 30 years of service. But we're talking about the Korean War veterans today who fought from June 25, 1950, through July 27, 1953. And whereas more than 1.7 million American men and women served in the Korean War, and whereas each year both the United States and South Korea observe National Korean War Veterans Armistice Day on July 27, and whereas this day was established to commemorate and recognize the armistice agreement that triggered a ceasefire in a longstanding war, and whereas the Korean War is a significant chapter in American history, in which over 36,000 Americans lost their lives and 100,000 came home injured as a result of the war. And then there are the 7,500 U.S. servicemen and women who remain missing in action and unaccounted for to this day. And whereas this year marks the 70th anniversary of the Korean War Armistice that ended the widespread fighting in the Korean Peninsula in July of 1953, and whereas this day honors those who fought and those we lost during the Korean War. Therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, invite the residents of the City of Prescott to join in recognizing July 27 as Korean War Veterans Armistice Day, and to proudly display the flag of the United States to show our support for the Korean War veterans in our community, whose service and sacrifice allow us and all freedom-loving people to enjoy the blessings of liberty. In witness thereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this 25th day of July 2023. So, John, can I invite you up here? For the rest of you Korean War veterans who want to join me up here, and we'll get a nice lasting recognition portrait of all of you. John, would you like to say a few words? I know you're the chapter president and have been quite a long time, so I'm sure you have had a chance to speak occasionally about your service.
Thank you, Mayor Good. The Korean War is well-known as being the forgotten war. Just saw an example of that in the paper the other day. They were talking about veterans' housing. They're taking care of the World War II veterans, they're taking care of the Vietnam veterans, skipped right over the homeless Korean veterans, of which thankfully there aren't many. I'm very proud to have been associated with these Korean veterans that reside here in the Prescott and the greater city area. I'd like to know that our Korean War Veterans Association is now open to all who have served in Korea since the beginning of hostilities up till the present day. Our chapter is one of about 100 remaining. A whole lot of chapters across the nation had to shut down because of lack of membership. And I'm sure with all our new residents, we now have many new Korean servicemen, they're in town, and I'd urge them to join the Korean War Veterans Association, National Association. It's available online. Once they do that, we'll be able to contact them and invite them to our meetings, where we do a bit of socialization and some good in the community. And once again, thank you, Mayor Good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
This is for you. You can put it on your wall.
You bet. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. You don't mind if we don't sing, do you?
You're gonna sing.
No, I sing. You don't mind if we don't sing? We can leave now?
Are you gonna leave now?
Yeah, thanks. Does anybody want to go now?
Welcome to State Route 89, Sin City. If you want to enjoy somewhere else, you're welcome to.
While the mayor makes his way back to his seat, we'll go ahead and get started because we have a couple of comment cards here, but we'll be doing our open call to the public now. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding items that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens are limited to addressing council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussions on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have several public speaker cards, and our first one is Sylvia Yimmy.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, City Council and Mayor Good. My name is Sylvia Itzelhimi. I am a Prescott resident. I grew up in this town. I went to school here as a child, and as an adult, I created my career here as an artist and designer. Within the past year, I was part of founding House of Hughes, a nonprofit for promoting and facilitating arts made by the LGBTQ community in Yavapai County. As president, it's important to me that all of our board members at House of Hughes were also raised here. Prescott truly is our hometown, and our work with House of Hughes is part of us giving back to our community. House of Hughes creates a safe space for all kinds of creative expression. We have produced full seasons of cabaret variety shows that include live singing, handmade fashion, original poetry, and also drag. We are currently developing a film and photography program and creative works showcases. Our most recent two events include our family-friendly Pride Festival and the Pride Show at Susie's Prescott Center for the Arts this past June. The Pride Festival was the first of its nature that we've ever put on. It was free to the public. It had activities for youth like board games and coloring pages and face painting, and was tabled by supportive businesses and organizations like Polara Health and Voter Choice Arizona and multiple faith-based organizations. The Lonesome Valley Rangers worked security for our event, and we had an event manager keeping an eye on any issues that could arise. Thankfully, the worst to happen being a mild case of heat stroke. There has been some misinformation spread stating that we sold alcohol at this event, and that's not true. Any decisions made about alcohol were in control of the venue we rented and were not under House of Hughes's jurisdiction. However, had we sold alcohol, it would have been just as legal for the venue staff to sell alcohol to adults over 21 at our event under their liquor license, just as it is at the rodeo or at any local restaurant. There was a reading of Families, Families, Families by Suzanne Lang, which is a children's picture book describing how families are made up of a variety of different loved ones, sometimes two dads or one mom. Some children have many pets and some have a plant, and that all of these families are beautiful and worth celebrating. The safety of Prescott families is a priority of all of ours. I grew up a queer kid in this town without a community that was easy for me to turn to, and no amount of oppression or isolation would have kept me from growing up into the queer adult that I am today. All it did was keep me unsafe and unsupported when I was my most vulnerable. And that is why I care to provide a safe community for other queer people in our town today. I'm here because I want to publicly thank everyone in our community who makes it possible for House of Hughes to do the work that we do through their support. And I want to thank you on behalf of the hundreds who came to our Pride Festival and expressed their gratitude for the presence of an organization like House of Hughes in Prescott, Arizona. The city council's continued protection and support of the LGBTQ community is appreciated so that we may continue to express our First Amendment freedom of assembly in our efforts to celebrate authentic expression and art. After all, Prescott is everybody's hometown. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Good, council members. I'd like to thank the veterans in the room. My name is Hada Fay. I'm a medical professional, a homeowner, a student, and I have a monthly column and a local paper. I'm also in my 50s. My husband and I call this our home. I was in attendance at the Pride event at Susie's Prescott Center for the Arts on June 24, 2023. The clinic I work for tabled that event along with Polara Health, Yavapai County Community Health Services, and other businesses and organizations. This was a family-friendly event. It had yoga, face painting, dance, coloring, and activities for families and children together. There was no alcohol inside of this event other than hand sanitizer. And I want to talk to you today about drag. I've been watching drag for over 40 years. Most of you have too. From Bugs Bunny to Mrs. Doubtfire, Flip Wilson, Corporal Klinger and Mash, Julie Andrews and Victor Victoria, Eddie Murphy and the Nutty Professor, Tony Curtis and Jack Lemmon and Some Like It Hot are all examples of drag. And drag, for me, is a reminder as a woman of a time when women weren't allowed to take a stage and act or sing. So in the scripts, off in the corner, there was the acronym D-R-A-G, which stands for "Dressed as a Girl," because males had to take on those roles. This event was beautiful. It was empowering, was filled with love and community. The signs of hate that lined the sidewalk in front of the event did nothing and had no effect on its success. LGBTQ plus members are members of this community. They work, they pay taxes, and they vote. And they're also members of our families and our social circles. These are people we love. And when they are attacked and denigrated, so are we. Noam Chomsky once said, "If we don't believe in free expression for the people we despise, we don't believe in it at all." George Washington, our first president, said, "If the freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent, we may be led like sheep to the slaughter." He said this several hundred years ago, and it couldn't be more relevant today. My nephew was born and raised here, so was his partner, and they left Prescott at a time when it wasn't friendly to people who were in the LGBTQ plus community. And they came to this event, and they saw that there is a community here, and it is safe to have a Pride event not far from the town square. And that event was so incredible, they're going to be moving back to their hometown because it is safe to have these events here. That's all I have. Thank you.
So my name is Sundrop Carter. I grew up here in Prescott, went to school here in Prescott, graduated from Yavapai College, and in my teen years witnessed several ugly acts of homophobia against friends of mine here. I left as a young person, and after many years away, I moved back about a year and a half ago. And quite honestly, I was not all that hopeful that Prescott had changed or was a more welcoming place for people of color or for LGBTQ folks. However, this summer, I was so excited to see the myriad of events during Pride Month, the drag shows, the family-friendly events. It was just heartwarming for me, having the experiences I had growing up here. I attended the House of Hughes Pride Festival on June 24 and thought it was a joyful and welcoming event. It was also particularly meaningful to me because my childhood friend, best friend, who also grew up in Prescott, was in town that weekend with her family, including one of her children who was non-binary. And for the two of us and her family to be able to go to this event that was so welcoming, I really can't express how much that meant to both of us and to her family. Being able to attend that event made her family feel welcome and made her feel like Prescott was a place that, you know, maybe she would move back to one day. I'm still lobbying her to do so. They were also, they're from, they live in a small town that does not have events like this that publicly welcome and support gender diverse communities. And they were so surprised and delighted by how many organizations and community members were at this event showing support for, well, non-binary communities, as her child is. And so I just am here to say that for all of you who are community leaders in Prescott, I hope all of you use your voice and your power as community leaders to publicly support events like the Pride Festival and publicly support organizations like House of Hughes because they are so critical and they are necessary to really ensure that Prescott embodies and is everybody's hometown. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, everyone else. I'm Ron Owesley. I live at 1305 West Ridge Drive in Prescott, and I'm here to kind of help clear something up. I'm just going to read this to you real quick. I hereby request that you withdraw the Save the Rodeo petition from the August 8 agenda. I have asked Ron Owesley, President of Prescott Frontier Days, to make this request on my behalf. The petitions were merely used to show the broad support we have. They weren't meant to be a petition, per se. Thanks again to the mayor and council for your support of the world's oldest rodeo. Best regards, Steve Pierce. And I would also thank all of you. We appreciate all your support. I know it's taken a lot of your time, and I think we're headed in a good direction. So thank you all very much.
Anne Marie Ward.
Good evening, Mayor Good, Mayor Protem Montoya, members of the council, and the general public. Our family would like to take a moment to address the State Route 89 widening proposal through the granite dells. As 23-year residents in the same home directly on the corridor, we were naturally concerned with the introduction of the State Route 89 widening proposal. Because of the nature of the political world we live in, it often feels like government moves forward regardless of the will and concern of the people. We were greatly concerned that that would be the case with this proposal. However, this evening, our family would like to say thank you because that has not been the case. We would like to specifically thank Mayor Protem Montoya, Councilman Sishka, Councilwoman Cantalmy, Councilman Moore, City Manager Katie Gregory, Deputy City Manager Tyler Goodman, and Public Works Director Gwen Rowich. Each one of you took your time to either visit our home, to speak with us and our neighbors, to walk through our community, to take your time to host meetings, to answer our questions, and to respond to our concerns. We cannot thank you enough. Our family and our neighbors are extremely grateful and encouraged by our experience so far. The proposal for widening State Route 89 is a delicate balance of examining long-term public good and need while also examining the preservation of the pristine granite dells and the protection of private property rights. We strongly encourage the community to come to the table to discuss this project as it moves forward, as we will. And again, we want to thank you all for being open and engaging to result in a positive experience rather than what we see so often in the national news. Thank you all.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. This comes from me being a fiscal conservative. I looked at the agenda for today, and I saw we're going to spend another $1 million on the new city hall. And it brought up in my mind as to where do we stand with the $10 million project, which was appropriated in 2021? Maybe it would be a good time just to review where the project is against the $10 million. So I did go back through council meeting notes and videos, and I find that we bought the new city hall for $7.55 million. We then added $100,000 onto that with new city hall signage. We then went further, and apparently in due diligence, this wasn't caught, we have a new city hall generator now for a cost of $1.2 million on top of that. In 2023, we're looking to spend on improvements to new city hall, $3.83 million. Now, I understand some of this money is coming from recreation services, about $4.9 Now, I understand some of this money is coming from recreation services, about $4.97 million. And then we're going to renovate the landscaping around new city hall for an undisclosed amount of money. And then in 2024, in the budget, we have $2.87 million also allocated to improvements. In particular, the one that caught my eye was to coordinate with IT and facilities for the design and optimization of council chambers and the audio and video systems. So that brought me to an approximate sum of $15.5 million that we're spending on the new city hall. Now, I understand that we also have an internal loan that goes towards paying for that, but that $15.5 that I calculate, I'm sure you can get somebody else to calculate an approximate figure around that, is a lot more than the $10 million that the citizens were promised in terms of this new city hall. So we also, in addition to that, on the books, have a stranded old city hall, which we've tried to sell and now stands as a liability of somewhere between $2 and $2.5 million. So if we add all that up, it's a pretty big number for the citizens to swallow at this point. But we did buy 29 more parking spaces, so that was really good. Certainly, the facility here is very good as well, although the elevator, we need to move people in five or six at a time, is a bit of a problem. So the original purchase, there were quotes from city staff on it will require 1.5 million of improvements. We'll have a loan not to exceed $10 million. Now, we're either very poor estimators or we're very poor at project management. I'm not sure which it is. So I would request the-
Please conclude your remarks.
-to conduct an end-of-project audit at this point in time so we can fairly go to the public and tell them what we've done with over $15.5 million. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone on the council want to pull anything from our 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items on the consent Hearing no objections to pull any of those items, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8F.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to item 9, consent ordinance. City Clerk, do you want to read item 9A?
Yes, thank you. Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1835, approving the granting of an APS easement in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. And adoption of ordinance number 2023-1836 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of easements from Michael A. Byrd, John J. and Joanne Leslie Crocker, Frederick E. Lloyd, Jerry D. Lake, the Lori Ann Lyle Revocable Trust, the Quinn Family Revocable Trust, the Stumpf Recollo Revocable Trust, and the Todd K. Turnham Revocable Trust for the Juniper Karen Waterline Project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easements.
Well, thank you, City Clerk. I know that was quite a mouthful. Do we have any comments regarding the impact of this easement? City Manager?
I don't, I'm sorry. I was just asking if we do these both in one motion. No, we don't have any comments related to the APS easement. This is a no-cost easement. This is a no, this is just so that they can have access to an area behind the, what was it, the old post office.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that the public at large knew that there was very little to no-cost impact to this easement approval. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-1835.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote.
And we will need a motion for the second one since they weren't done together.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-1836 as well.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Very good. We'll now move to our regular agenda, item 10A.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an item that is being brought back to council, was originally on the June, was originally came in on the June 13th council meeting and was discussed at the July 11th council meeting. This was a petition that was put forward by Ms. Siegel to the city council regarding the council's consideration of zoning considerations, rezoning, or approval of master plans, conceptual plans, or site plans as it relates to the Prescott Rodeo grounds. At the July 11th voting meeting, the council voted, per my request primarily, the council voted to allow us to go back, the staff to go back and work with the petitioners who brought this forward to bring back a resolution, likely a slightly modified resolution for the council to consider and vote on. And so we did that. We did meet with the petitioners and have, are proposing a modified resolution to the original petition that still sticks to the intent of what the petitioners were looking to try to accomplish with their petition, which was really to ensure a sufficient amount of public engagement on this process and holding a certain number of public hearings prior to the council having a final vote on the overall program. So we did get a chance to do that. I would like just very quickly to talk through a little bit of the key pieces of that. Exhibit A in the, on the resolution really kind of outlines the process by which we came to some agreement on. And that identifies kind of through our normal development process as the rodeo comes forward with their plans, their rezoning, or their master plan, or their site plan, that they will bring those to the city and allow the staff a chance to review that. Once they have that opportunity, as allowed per our city code, and the community development director has the authority to request that the applicant then hold some additional neighborhood meetings, those are meetings that can be used to identify issues of the community and the neighborhoods surrounding the rodeo or other public-type issues. So we're going to be requesting that they hold two meetings. Once that, once those go through, staff will continue to review any changes that come as a result of those neighborhood meetings. And after that, and after staffs have had a plans, a chance to review the plans, they will bring it back, they will notice and bring it back as we normally would for a planning and zoning commission meeting. That will be a public hearing, and it will allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to weigh in on both the rezone and the, and the site plan, as well as any other master plan elements or things like that that come through. Once that's completed, the applicant will be required to go through the, so that would be the third public meeting, just trying to keep track of numbers here. After that, they would be required to go through the Water Issues Subcommittee. That would be another public meeting for them to review their water budget. And then once the meetings from that minute are, those, once the minutes from that meeting are published, that would create our 60-day public comment period. At that point, within that 60-day public comment period, we would hold, with council would hold two study sessions. So we have two additional meetings that would allow for citizens to hear what's in the project and to comment on that. And then we would, before we would move forward with any final voting session of the council, we would conclude that 60-day kind of public hearing or public, public input process before we'd bring that to the council for a final vote. So that is the minimum process that we will take going forward, and that is what is reflected in the modified resolution that we're bringing forward for council.
Thank you very much for that review. I think when I mentioned on my weekly update that we were trying to clarify some of the language that was originally presented, there is a difference between public meetings and public hearings. And a lot of that has to do with how notice is publicized and how broadly these hearings are publicly noticed, not only in the media, but also how far from where the concerns are, so neighborhood notifications and postings like that. So at this point, I think for those petitioners and for the people in the community that are very concerned about this entire process, you'll see that there will be an actual total number of seven meetings, two of which are actually classified as hearings. And I think that should be very clear that we're going to be as transparent and listen to all of the stakeholders in the community and their concerns so that we end up with an agreement and a, and a plan for future utilization of the rodeo that we all can be proud of. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I do just have a question for clarification. I know when we were discussing this at length two weeks ago, we were talking about the zoning of this property, and it was stated, of course, that the city owns the property, so if the property needed to be rezoned, that the city would be initiating that process. So I'm a little confused by step number two, where it says Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated simultaneously submits planning application, and then parentheses, rezone, including site plan. Are they submitting the zoning request, or is that coming from the city? Because I'm, I'm not clear on this process.
Sure. And let me kind of clarify that. So Prescott Rodeo Days has indicated that they have a master plan that they would like the city to allow them to build on the current city site. The current city site has a certain underlying zoning on the site, which is currently not for a rodeo. Let's just put it to that way. So it would be the city's interest and our intent is to work with the rodeo based on their master plan to submit for a rezone. So it would be submitted in, simultaneously with their master plan, site plan, and what they're trying to do. So it becomes the basis for what we're asking for in a rezone, and then the city would bring that through the process, and they would, they would be sort of a co-applicant based on that.
So right now, it's zoned residential. Would it be zoned BG? Or what would it be zoned, I mean, what would the city propose that it would be rezoned as?
I think that under, you know, I would probably defer to my community development director on what it would actually, but it would probably be a, what do we call them here? I'm sorry, specific plans or area-
Yeah, thank you. Interim Community Development Director Chelsea Walton, it would be a specially planned community, SPC, so that it would lock in the site plan.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Through all the public input that we've been getting, everyone is supportive of the rodeo, per se, and they're supportive of the renovations and the improvements, and not necessarily of the expansion. There's still a lot of more discussions needed on the expansion. So is this going to be in two sections where we can move ahead with phase one and two of the master plan to proceed with the renovations? Or are we going to be approving the whole master plan?
I would say this, that we would be, if we're bringing forward a rezone, if we're going to go through a rezone, we'd want to understand the entire master plan. That's what's important first. When they bring in their site plan, they certainly can indicate that they want to move in phases through their site plan. Their site plan will lay out all of the interests that they have. It will be determined by a variety of things associated with how much parking is available, you know, what the infrastructure availability is, how much, how many square feet they're looking to develop. All those types of things would come through the site plan and go through the normal staff review and analysis associated with that. Once they have that identified, you know, then they can, they can say, we would like to move through in phases. We might want to do improvements first, and then at some point in a phase, future phase or a third phase or a fourth, I think when we had some representatives here before, I think they talked about four separate phases. But we have to understand the full picture and approve the full picture before they can start in any phase.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is on exhibit A. The mayor mentioned that we had some discussion around public meetings versus public hearings. The way this document reads that I'm looking at in the packet suggests that all seven of these are public meetings. Is that correct?
I was going to say that meeting is an encompassing term. So there are seven public meetings, two of which are public hearings.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. That puts my mind at ease about that issue. So there will be, part of this process will encompass public hearings, which do have a higher level of notice that goes into the community. The other question I had is, these are all spelled out within various kind of process of how the approval process for the site plan and the water allocation, all that goes through. If Prescott Frontier Days, as was suggested at the last meeting, has a meeting with select neighbors within that community to talk about and get kind of buy-in to that, that's not part of this meeting process? Or I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's a very good question. And the, really, the process will start, this process will start once they submit all of their application and for their site plan and as we get the rezone put together. So any meetings prior to that are not part of this process.
And so if they, if they're talking to stakeholders or different entities, that's not part of this process at all? This process doesn't start until they start submitting the process?
That's true. And they certainly have the right to do that if they want to have those meetings and have some in advance of them submitting their, their application.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Councilman Tenney?
Thank you, Mayor. This question's been answered my mind to an extent by what Mayor has shared with us and Mayor Pro Tim just clarified, but, and it may be an unfair question in that there may be enough divergences. But if we are to adopt this resolution as written, can you summarize for us briefly? I really liked your exhibit A here, and you went over that verbally with us. That's terrific. It kind of walks us through the process, explicates, there's multiple opportunities for public input, et cetera. There would be, under a typical process, also multiple opportunities for public input. Many of these things are built into the way that we do things. Could you explicate for us what the differences would be if we said, you know what, we don't like this resolution, want things to go as they typically go?
Sure.
Which is not the way I'm leaning necessarily at all. But could you, is that a fair question to ask right now? Are there enough divergences that you'd need to get back with?
No, I would, I would say that really, under item number four, those two public meetings that are under item number four would be ones that we would require and that our interim community development director can require of the applicant once they put in. And that's really, and the intent of that is to get as much information from the community, what are the issues, what are going to be the, you don't want to show up at planning and zoning and have everybody feel like you've not addressed everything. So that, those two meetings would be additional. And under item number 10, the public meetings five and six, which would be two separate study sessions within that 60-day, you know, public comment period. So those four meetings would be- So, those four meetings would be not always typical. We can always request that they hold a neighborhood meeting when they bring in an application, but we're going to be requesting two. So, those four, four meetings of the seven are beyond our normal process.
Got it. Got it. I appreciate that. So, we are certainly expanding the process if we vote for this to get additional public input, slow down the process from what might be typical. But I, I heard from a couple of citizens who suggested that if we were not to adopt this, it would, something would happen in a back room someplace, and we'd come to people at the end of things, and there'd be no public input of any kind. And it appears from what you're telling me, that's certainly not the case.
That's certainly not the case, and I should probably qualify. Really, the only two that, that are sort of add-ons are the two, the two study sessions. Normally, once planning and zoning makes a recommendation to council, we bring it to council. In this case, the request really is to have some additional study sessions. We're asking them to do two meetings on the front end as well, which is normal if, if we feel we have a very contentious item that needs some additional, you know, public input.
I really appreciate the clarification. It sounds to me like we've gone from a very extensive public input and review process to a very, very extensive public input and review process if we adopt this. So, thank you for that.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. You know, I've always gotten the idea, and I'm not speaking for the rodeo or Frontier Days, but I've always gotten the idea that they're willing to get as much public input as is necessary. I think that we all need to step back, take a deep breath, and understand that we're all in this thing together, and we're looking for what's good for the whole. And so, you know, I think that, that all of what we're talking about today is not going against what they want. This is a master plan. The rodeo isn't even set on what the end is, the end of that master plan looks like. So, I think that public input is absolutely needed. I think that the neighborhood should take a step back and go, "Hey, these guys are not our enemy. They want what's best for us." And, and I would be very surprised if that wasn't the case. And so, I think that, that we all need to sit back to get together, and I know it sounds like kumbaya. I said that the last meeting. But we all need, we, we all can get together and come up with an outstanding plan for the expansion. And I don't, I think that calling it an expansion is wrong, because they're not expanding the, the physical boundaries of the rodeo grounds. They're not putting up a four-story hotel. They're not putting up a 5,000-person convention center. They're trying to put up what is going to take that rodeo grounds into the future. And from, not only from a professional cowboy standpoint, but what is going to give it the most opportunity to do what it does best, and become an equestrian center, and with equestrian events, and do what's best for our Western heritage.
Councilwoman Ken, tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've had no less than 50 letters and emails on this issue. And just to kind of drill it down, the two biggest questions are, just for clarification, is the plan literally at 30% conceptual drawing, is the question? The other question is, how can, and what, what does the rodeo have set up for the citizens to be able to follow along with the percentage of completion? The biggest question is, as we all discovered in, in our last meeting, that nobody wants to get rid of the rodeo. But the people, the stakeholders, the people that live in the area are very concerned with how do they have the ability to follow along? Are the rodeo, the, the group willing to pivot if they find out through some of these discussions that, for example, I heard through the grapevine that the concerts have now gone away. And my suggestion was, back at the person that said that she knew that, was involved to put that on the website. I don't know if they've done that now. That was one of the biggest questions of all. But how, how can the public follow along? And are they still at 30% conceptual in those drawings? Is that, is that still true? And what do they have set up? I'd like to hear from somebody about that, in order for the public to be able to follow along and see where they're at.
Councilman Moore.
I was just going to say, I think that I'm reluctant to get too much into the 30% because of what's been agendized. I think the procedure is, and to the extent that 30% is relevant, it's whether we follow up on that in the procedure that's part of the resolution, not the substance of it.
Yeah, I would comment that I think we have a lot more actual planning to see, rather than just the conceptual grand vision. And as we work through each one of these stages, and we find out, how do we rezone, what type of infrastructure is needed, the financial analysis that would be involved in being able to support each one of these extensions of capacity, we'll have a better picture of what is reasonable, and what is probably far from reasonable. So, I think that's the whole intention of this process, is to be able to have that public input from the community, from the neighborhoods, the Gail Gardner neighborhood area, be able to look at a legitimate analysis of traffic and other conditions, so that we can have a more detailed understanding of how much it would cost, how, how it would be financed, how it would be managed, at what level do we find it acceptable, and what, what is going too far. I think we'll, we'll identify this as this process proceeds.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to again reiterate that we make sure the, the public is aware, either we do it, or the rodeo does it, on every step of the phase, the phase of this, because not everybody can attend those meetings. And we need to have some kind of a public forum that the public can follow along with as this thing develops. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one additional question about Exhibit A. It's seven meetings, two of which are public hearings. But I just want to clarify, it is entirely possible that an additional meeting would happen along the way if, for instance, there was a contentious issue at P&amp;Z. I've seen at P&amp;Z, sometimes there'll be additional meetings. I just want to throw that out there, just to kind of maybe clarify for the public that seven meetings is what we're outlining now, but it could be more than that potentially.
I would say you are correct on that. This is kind of our minimum of what we think is going to occur, and how it's going, and at what points in the process they will occur.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll state the fact that when I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we considered some very extensive development agreements. We had, in one case, probably eight to 10 different meetings as we went through each one of those parts of that complex agreement. So, there's certainly no restriction that they'll only have two meetings. They could have many more until they feel comfortable that they understand the scope of whatever rezoning might be proposed. Councilwoman Ken, tell me, are you back up? Oh.
Rusing.
Oh. Councilmember Rusing, you're back up.
Thank you. I would just like to clarify Mr. Shishka's comments about not calling it an expansion. I believe the expansion term refers to expanding the number of events from something that's just basically once a year on rodeo week, to something that's more, having more events year-round. Correct?
Can I answer that, Mayor?
Go ahead there, Councilmember.
Hey, thank you very much.
For us.
You know, there are already a ton of events at the rodeo grounds. There's not just the rodeo. And so, you know, I think that that's a moot point. I think that it's what kind of events do we want? The rodeo's already said, "We don't need concerts. We don't need tractor pulls. We don't need monster truck shows. It's an equestrian center." And they would like the kind of facilities that would bring equestrian events to that facility.
Do we have any public comment?
We do. Mayor Howard Mechanic.
Mayor and Consul, I appreciate this procedure being established, provide a lot of public input. I have just a couple of points regarding the public input. Under Section 4, Prescott Frontier Days will conduct two neighborhood meetings with city My understanding of that term, city input, is that the city will input the procedures, how this is going to be held. Hopefully, it won't cause a lot of concern like the last meeting that the rodeo had, which was a public meeting. They also claimed they had two previous, they had three previous meetings. Nobody at the third meeting knew about the first two meetings. I'm sure you'll do more advertising in the future, but my concern is the procedure from the last meeting they had. They asked people not to make any kind of verbal comments. I think that restricts the public ability to discuss the issue. So, hopefully, public comments will be accepted verbally at that meeting, the two meetings. The other ones were advertised in conjunction with the city of Prescott, which gave the impression, I think, to the public that the city was under some type of control of that meeting, which I don't believe the city was under any kind of, kind of control of that meeting. So, hopefully, these will be more of a city partnership between the city and the Frontier Days. And the other one is based on an issue that a couple consul members were addressing regarding who's, who's applying for these changes. And I think it's a fine line here, as far as is the city applying, or is Prescott Frontier Days applying? My understanding is whoever's making the application can adjust the application as, as things go along. So, if Prescott Frontier Days is the applicant, there won't be as much ability for the city of Prescott to adjust the application as it goes along. So, I would prefer the city of Prescott to be the applicant, taking the master plan that's submitted by Prescott Frontier Days to start with, but the city being able to adjust as it goes, rather than just requesting the applicant Prescott Frontier Days to make some changes. I know it's a fine line here, but I think the city needs to be under control here. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, just to be clear, this, the resolution that we have put forward as a recommended resolution is not the original resolution by the petitioners. We have worked with the petitioners. So, the petitioner, a representative of the petitioners here to discuss this. Again, council has the ability to approve, deny, or approve with modifications, even this version that's been presented to you. But the motion would be to approve the modified resolution, and representative of petitioners here, if they want to address that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the representative.
I broke it. How much is it? Somebody say, Deb Thalassidis, destructive person here. I live at 1972 Meadowbrook. I am the co-signer on this petition. Marty Segal is the signer. I wanted to let you all know, I spoke to her on Saturday. She is in concurrence with the attachment A. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Katie Gregory, Joe Young, Sarah Seep, and Chelsea, there you are, Chelsea Walton, for sitting down with a couple of us to go through this. It makes a lot more sense now than it, it did before. We were not intending to discount the process you already go through, but items 10 and 11 are responsive to what we asked for in the resolution. So, we are comfortable with this, and wanted to let you know that. Also, thanks to all of you for the transparency. I don't know where this is going to end up, and listening to the conversation amongst all of you, I don't think you do either. So, it's going to be great to have the community come together and talk about this. So, thank you for that. This makes me nervous.
Thank you, Deb. I know I have stated many times that I do have a crystal ball on my desk in City Hall across the hallway, but I haven't been able to see the end product of this process. So, we're going to work through it and take all the necessary steps. There's no additional comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023, revised resolution? Do I have to say that?
No, it's just the resolution I presented.
Okay. Resolution Number 2023-1862.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Well, that'll conclude a very short city council voting meeting today. I do have a quote from another one of our founding fathers, John Jay. A lot of people don't recognize his name, but he was the first chief justice of the Supreme Court of the United States. And he said, "America belongs to we, the people. It does not belong to Congress. It does not belong to special interest groups. It does not belong to the courts. It belongs to we, the people." It's kind of ironic that he becomes the first Supreme Court presiding justice, but nevertheless, let's keep that in mind. This meeting is adjourned.